Welcome to the January 21st, 2025 meeting of County Commission. Please silence the cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. If anybody wants to speak today, fill out a form and we'll make sure you get on the, uh, on the list to speak. So we'll have a call to order, and since there's nobody on teleconference today, there's four of us here, let the record note that Jerry is gone for the day. So we'll be led in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance by Deb Hadcock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this moment, we'll review and approve the agenda. And if, uh, any public comments on the agenda? Nope, see no public comments.
Move to proof.
Sorry. We've got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda contains the following items, which are listed here and approved. They are actually, uh, with the packet too. So if anybody has anything they want to move from the agenda, anybody on the public want to remove anything or have a comment on it? Seeing none, the commission? Seeing none, I didn't entertain a motion here.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Sorry.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion carries. So we're gonna go to the regular agenda items, which is item number seven. Items from Central State's Fair, 2025 Black Hills Stock Show opening, Mr. Ron Jeffries, General Manager. And we have an executive proclamation that will follow with this.
Hoping so. I think Commissioner Hadcock, you have it?
Yep. Let's read the proclamation. You have it, Deb?
Yes, we'll read it now.
Yep. That'd be fine.
So executive proclamation, Pennington County, South Dakota, 2025 Black Hills Stock Show, January 31st through February 8th, 2025. Whereas we celebrate the 66th anniversary of the Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo held at the Central State's Fairgrounds in the Monument Center in Rapid City, South Dakota. And whereas the Black Hills Stock Show is an economic driver for Pennington County, Rapid City, and Western Dakota with an economic impact of over 25 million. Whereas we applaud the Black Hills Stock Show and Central State's Fair management staff, the Board of Directors, our community leaders, the city of Rapid City, Pennington County, the Monument staff, and the hundreds of volunteers that provide the hospitality and safety to make this annual event as an experience for all to remember. Whereas we bring Western hospitality through main, many livestock shows and sales, mutton bustin', rodeo, local and national agricultural exhibits, live concerts, a ranch rodeo, the first annual bullfighters rodeo, PRCA national award-winning Sutton Rodeo, and a Boots and Beer Festival. These are just a few of the many events held in the Central State's Fairgrounds, Monument Center, and Summit Arena. And whereas the Pennington County Board of Commissioners and employees recognize a 66th Annual Black Hills Stock Show and Rodeo held in Rapid City for the next 10 days and the welcome good old Western hospitality and friendship for all to enjoy. Now therefore, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim Friday, January 31st through September, February 8th, 2025, as the 66th Annual Black Hills Stock Show and Rodeo. In testimony, this is just the signature of the board, but thank you, Ron, for coming here today. This proclamation, I believe, represents all of Ag and our ranchers and farmers across many states, not just Pennington County and our county. So I thank you for putting this on, and you've done years and years and years of this, and you've done a wonderful job with your staff, your volunteers, and we just thank you for all your work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for the time to be here and just to let you know that the stock show is right upon us. Um, and Deb, you read it in the proclamation and you followed up with your comments. Uh, this show is a success because we have an entire community, an entire group of volunteers, some great staff members, Board of Directors, that come out and support the event. I mean, that's really what makes this show go. No single person is the key to it. It takes an entire group of people to put this on, and I'm very proud of the team we've assembled and the Board of Directors, the volunteers. They do a great job. We had a meeting of our staff the other day, and we all, we all got together, and at this time, it's usually crunch time and everybody's nervous, and this is the most calm we've ever been, which means it's either gonna be a mess or it's gonna be a record. I don't know. But, uh, you know, we watched the agricultural market as leading into the stock show, and the two things that impact us is cattle prices and weather. I mean, that's, that's what drives the stock show. Cattle prices are awesome. I heard him talking about 27 degrees below this morning. Uh, it's good to have the cold weather behind us. We're gonna be at least in the 40s during setup. So it looks like the kickoff for everything is gonna get going really well. We start things on January 30th with our official ribbon cutting, reading of the proclamations, and followed right up with the celebrity showmanship. Commissioner Hadcock has generously volunteered to be the representative from the commission. They'll be showing one of the animals out of the petting zoo as part of a, uh, chance to get our urban folks to get together and see what it's like to show an animal. Now, these animals have never been shown, been shown before, and they might drag you around the ring, but it's a lot of fun and just a great chance to get the community involved. We also have the mayor, councilperson, Pat Roberts, will also be showing as well. So you won't be alone in there, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I also wanna mention that, uh, excuse me, rodeo Rapid City did receive the rodeo, large indoor rodeo of the year from the PRCA this year. It's a great honor, and it's wonderful to have them as a rodeo component to the Black Hills Stock Show. We're also excited about the staff that the monument has coming back out to help put this on, uh, the city property that we utilize for that. And when they built the Summit Arena, we thought, oh, great, we've got all this extra space, and we're able to add youth activities, youth livestock shows, cattle, sheep, and goats to the show. The numbers continue to rise. We're already past last year's numbers, um, which is fantastic, and we've still got really technically a couple of weeks to finish up. And our livestock entries for the Hubbard Beach Supreme Row are up. Vendors are limited just by space, um, but again, the Cinch Trade Show, uh, fully packed. I was at Las Vegas for the convention that they had just prior to the NFR this year, and I can tell you from going through a couple of their trade shows, we don't, we don't hold second place to anybody in the trade show business. Uh, it's just a great shopping experience. When the stock show was designed, it was planned to be this time of year. All the harvest is done, and we're just about the start of calving. And so this is the last hurrah for our rural neighbors to come back in and celebrate before they go into the next 11 and a half months of, of hard work. Uh, I'm glad they've got their feeding done, and the cold weather's gonna give them a break, get them into town. Uh, we'd like to invite everybody to come out and join us. We expect a fantastic show.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I was just gonna make sure that you got some time to speak, and Gary, you got some time to speak. I know this is, go ahead.
So Ron, I'm guessing, uh, well, number one, a great lineup that you guys got this year, but I don't think a lot of folks realize that after the Black Hills Stock Show is done and everybody's gone home, you guys have already started planning the Central State's Fair.
We are. We're in the middle of planning Central State's Fair right as this is going on, and we'll end on Saturday, February 8th, and we'll have events back at the James Kirsten Event Center the following weekend. And the monument will have events at the, at the monument as well. So, uh, a great facility. We're lucky to have it, and we'll plan to keep it busy for us all year long. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews.
So Ron, one of the things I'm most pleased with, with this is the youth involvement in this and the youth activities that take place in it. And I just congratulate you for just continuing to build on that, not only for the stock show, but for the Central State's Fair. Uh, the youth are the ones that we really need to be, uh, attracting at this point in time. They'll continue to be promoters of these shows their, their entire lifetime, so thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
And I would wanted to just say something. I wanted to thank all of your, I don't know how many people realize how many volunteers. At one time, I think you said there was over 300 volunteers that contribute to this, and this is a huge economic driver for the city and the county. You know, if you look at the sales tax increases, when this, at this time of year, when the, um, so, stock show hits, you can see that the sales tax just, there's nothing else going on, and so you know, it's very contributed to that. And I wanted to thank you guys, and I wanted to thank all your volunteers, so.
Thank you.
If we had any, does anybody else wanna chime in here from the public and take this opportunity to do so? But seeing none, we'll move on. There's another item, um, I think.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd move to approve the Chair's signature on the executive proclamation proclaiming Friday, January 31st through Saturday, February 8th, 2025, as the 66th Annual Black Hills Stock Show and Rodeo.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Drews. There was an item here at B, I believe.
Yes.
Accounting practice changes for physical assets.
Yes, and I think Cindy, did you send a memo as well?
It says there's no motion necessary, but just an informational.
It's just informational. So, um, the last signed lease between Central State's Fair and the Pennington County Commission was 2002. Um, at that time, the generally accepted accounting principles, uh, required that Central State's Fair, Inc., even though we didn't own the real property, because we were the sole users or lessors of that property, the accounting principles required us to carry the physical assets on our, um, books. When we renewed the lease last year, we are now under new accounting practices, and the new accounting practices require that we either take them off our books or have a qualified audit, either one. We'd always questioned why we carried the, the buildings and the land on our, on our books, but it was an accounting practice and really had nothing to do and does not change finances for us or the county. So our Board of Directors voted to remove those assets from our books. It will show a negative impact because there'll be assets coming off our books, but won't be a financial change for us. Uh, we met with Cindy to talk about it, and, and she indicated that the county already carries those assets on their books, obviously, and it would be no inconvenience or hardship on her part to continue carrying them.
So that was a recommendation from your auditor or your accountant?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And this is simply a notice, information, unless you have questions.
Have a qualified audit if you don't need it, so that makes sense. Okay. Um, that'd be it from us here?
Thank you very much.
Again, no, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Item number eight, items from auditor. It's a budget supplement resolution, SP 25001. Is Cindy available here? I don't know if there's.
He's on here. Yeah.
Oh, okay, so is there someone else that has some supplement or something that they wanna do? Scott?
The supplement hearing is scheduled for 9:15, so we're just a little bit.
Just an explanation, Scott. If Scott would like to explain.
What the supplement is with Cindy.
Okay.
I'll try to stall for a couple minutes.
Thank you.
Uh, Scott Guffey, Penn County Natural Resource Director. Uh, this is simply, uh, we ordered a pickup off state bid list. Um, we had $30,000 in the budget last year for vehicle replacement. Didn't spend it. We're rolling it over to this year so we can pay for the, for the full amount. It was a diesel pickup. 30,000 doesn't buy much anymore for a vehicle replacement, so combined the two, we got enough to buy a diesel. Diesels are, they're hard to get off state bid. They're pretty limited now. They're getting more in stock, so we're able to finally get our diesel pickup this year.
So Chair.
Yep.
How many vehicles do you have, by chance, Scott?
Oh, I think we got, uh, eight pickups, um, couple of margins, the flatbed, standard spray trucks. Um, this is our second diesel. We did have to finally buy a diesel. We found a used one over in Minneapolis a couple of years ago, but it had pretty high miles on it. So now we got two, just in case something happens to that diesel. In the wintertime, we're pulling a Skidster, track Skidster, and a trailer, so diesel definitely pulls up better than a gas pickup.
Can you tell people in the audience what you, as a natural resource director, I don't think a lot of people are calling it weed and pest still, but what you do for our county, just to inform people about, um, you need a truck, but what do you use the truck for and what's your job description?
Sure. So in the summertime, we spray weeds. We put in slide-in, uh, tank sprayers on those pickups, uh, with the regular cab or with the regular box, and then we have a couple of flatbed pickups that just are full-time weed sprayers. And then the wintertime, we use a couple of those pickups. Uh, we do forestry work in conjunction with the Forest Service, mainly along our rightways, creating shade fuel breaks and stuff, so. Uh, we sell the timber that we cut there. That offsets that cost, so it's really a kind of a benefit. It allows us to keep our guys on, busy through the wintertime.
Thank you, Scott. Um, when you wanna see, um, taxpayer's dollars spent at his best and someone that raises money as, as well for his department, uh, Scott Guffey has been a leader in that for our natural resource director, so we appreciate everything you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So that was the only supplement, Cindy?
Yes. Mr. Chair, we would ask for a motion to approve the Budget Supplement Resolution, SP 25001.
Motion to approve, Resolution Budget Supplement, SP 25-001.
We got a motion. We got a motion and a second. Any comments from anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. We'll move on to item I-9. Items from State's Attorney, Laura Retzel. Resolution Appointment of Victim's Assistance Director. If you just wanna give us a, some summary of what you're doing.
Yes, I would be happy to. Laura Retzel, your State's Attorney, good morning. Today, I'm here to ask for a resolution appointing my new victim's assistance director. This is Tiffany Petro. Tiffany was former, formerly, formerly the program director with Children's Home Child Advocacy Center. Um, she's been previously at the Child Protective Services, Wavy, and Youth and Family Services. She's been in the space of serving individuals, children, and families for about 17 years. She has a Bachelor of Science in Psychology from Black Hills State, State University, a Master's in Human Services, and a second Master's in Public Health. I believe she's fully qualified to fulfill the duties as Director of Victims Assistance, and I would ask that you sign a resolution appointing her such.
Chair.
Commissioner Hadcock?
Welcome, Ms. Tiffany. You're well educated for this job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's a lot of education. That's cool, and that's a lot of work with all the advocacies and the things you have done.
Thank you.
So why, why did you come and why do you believe that you'd like to work in the State's Attorney as a victim advocate?
Yeah, absolutely. So I came to the county for two reasons. The first was Laura Retzel. Uh, her and I share a vision about what's possible when we're talking about serving those in our community and where we can take this program of serving victims of crime. That's something that's obviously very passionate and important to me. The second was to be part of the county as a whole. I have dedicated my life's work to serving this community, and I look forward to doing that in a deeper capacity by serving our justice system partners.
That's awesome. Thank you, Ms. Tiffany. And Ms. Laura, you put this in your 2025 budget?
I did.
Thank you, Ms. Laura.
Thank you. Any other comments? No other comments? I just wanna make one comment. I appreciate that. If you've ever been a victim of a crime, you understand the importance that your role plays, so we appreciate that. Thank you, and we'll move forward. Can I get a motion?
To approve.
A motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, sorry about that. I've got a motion and a second. Uh, may need discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Welcome, Tiffany.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Items from Treasurer Annette Brandt. Notice of Operations Closure for Motor Vehicle Processing. This'll be interesting. Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you, Annette.
Annette Brandt, Pennington County Treasurer. Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is just an informational line item on the agenda to inform you as well as the public that the state of South Dakota is now ready to converge over to the new motor vehicle system. They are going to be shutting down the current system to all counties in order to move all that information over. They're going to, the state runs the kiosk machine, which is the self-service terminal, the bright yellow, um, kiosk machine that people use for self-service when the county is not available, as well as their online service to renew their vehicles. They're gonna be shutting down on February 7th. Our office is going to need to close at 11 o'clock on Thursday, which is February 13th, in order to get all of our records converged over as well and get the inventory in. We do plan on working, um, on President's Day before the public is in front of us to work through some of the mail that comes through to try to get some of those kinks out before we're actually face-to-face with the public. But we won't have access to it until Monday, February, would be 17th, President's Day. On the memo that I sent out, I was working with, uh, um, with Cody Wiseman, our HR Marketing Manager, to get some of our flyers out and, um, get it in the paper to let everybody know if you're January, February, or March, motor vehicle, um, if you have a transaction to do, for any of those three months, you can always do them early. Renewals, you can do up to, um, 90 days early. The, when you purchase a new vehicle, you have 45 days to come into the office. So that extra half-day closing, um, we're trying to avoid a rush on the first day of implementation of the new system. We know we're going to run into some issues, um, but we're gonna work through those just as smoothly as we can. So I was, I would like to share with you some of the, um, public service announcement flyers that Cody has done for us here. This one is planned to be on one of the rotating billboards. There is a company in town that offers a free, um, public service announcement for a few, um, a few slots that they have, and so we've taken the opportunity to use that for our, uh, for our community. Not exactly sure where those are going, going to be. The price is right, and so we're gonna take whichever ones they have and however many slots they'll give us. And then this is the one that's gonna, going to be on Facebook to try to help get the message out as well. Um, again, just informing everybody that we will be closed. We'll be open back up again on February 18th. We will only be closed for motor vehicle transactions. That's a software that is owned by the state. The county does not, um, run it. We can't have them do it any earlier than that. We're kind of at their mercy, um, for when they've got it loaded and ready to go. We will be available to the public, however, for all real estate transactions. And this is just the second page of that public service announcement for Facebook. And this one, we probably will also add to the, um, to the billboard as well. We're just trying to encourage everybody to get in and do it just as early as they possibly can to avoid any delay. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Mr. Chair.
Chairman.
Okay. Chair will recognize, Commissioner Ross.
Uh, Annette, what percentage of motor vehicles would you say on a daily basis, what percent of your business would that encompass?
Our motor vehicle, uh, face-to-face transactions with the public is probably 90, 91, 92% of our business on a daily basis.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Drews?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Annette, uh, I know that there's not a backup system for the state when they're doing this.
Right.
So how much confidence have they expressed to you that, that they're gonna be able to make this convergence, uh, in our system on the, on the dates that they have set aside for themselves?
Less painful than the last one, you mean?
Yeah.
Um, they have, for the last year, they've been, uh, designing this program, and this time, they've allowed all of the county treasurers to be involved with it as well. Our staff has been training on this new program. Um, and quite honestly, we just, we're, we're trying to break it because we'd rather, we'd rather find something that's not right with it now before they go live. Um, and so we are putting a lot of man-hours into the testing. It is a totally different system than what we're using now. The staff seem to like it. Um, I don't really have an answer for you. My fingers are crossed. It's a conversion. Everybody knows that there's gonna be, there, there is going to be some issues with it. We're aware of that, but we're ready to take that on. You've heard me say for the last year and a half that a lot of the, um, transaction speed counts is due to the system that we're on right now, and I will tell you that when our staff do the transaction on the current system and do it, and then also do it on the new system, that it, it has shaved it in half, almost all of the transactions. So we are going to see some of that speed. Um, I'm very hopeful that they'll get going on it, um, right away so that we can see that as far as the wait time out in our lobby as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. And any other comments?
I'm good.
I just had a comment. Obviously, I think Commissioner Drews hit on something we know is gonna happen. We know that there's gonna be calls from, um, citizens in the area. Do we have like a contingency plan if they, if that's a particular, the only time they can make it or whatever, whatever's gonna happen? I, I.
There is no contingency plan. When the state of South Dakota shuts that down, we can no longer get into it, and we can't get into the other one until it is up and going. Now, we can look over their paperwork and so forth, but that's why I think it's really important for these public service announcements. The state is just now putting out theirs and together, working with Cody, I'd like to do ours a little bit earlier than that since our shutdown is, is on the, um, the 13th. Theirs is on the 7th. We're just now starting to see theirs come out, so unfortunately, there's not a contingency.
There's been some counties that are using this system right now?
No, we're all training on it. The, we, we're, the South Dakota car system, um, I believe it was two and a half, maybe three years ago, the governor put $65 million towards this new system, and we've been, and they've been building it ever since. And so now, we're ready for the go-live date. Fingers crossed.
My biggest concern is the commissioners up here are gonna get the calls. Um, maybe we can work on something that, how you want us to handle those calls, 'cause, so.
Okay. Yep. And, and it, as much as we can, I'm trying to get people to come in before then because I can guarantee that if they're in before that, we can get the stuff done before, but it, it is up in the air once, I mean.
Yeah, I think it's proven.
Once we go live, it is.
Yeah, I think it's proven, no matter what we do, there's gonna be a certain amount of people that aren't gonna be able to get there.
Right.
So we appreciate your time.
Okay.
And thank you.
Yep.
No other questions?
All right. Thank you.
So, we need a motion on this item?
Um, I don't believe, it's just informational.
No motion necessary, it was just informational. Thank you for your time and letting us know what's going on, 'cause, yep. Yep. So item number 11. Items for Emergency Services Communication Center, Director Kevin Carley. This is a collaboration with Mead County, so thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two issues for you this morning. The first one is informational item about a, a collaboration that we, uh, were planning with Mead County. I was contacted by the Mead County Sheriff recently, and, uh, he's got eight full-time employees in his dispatch center, and, and he lost four of those at the same time, and he's got replacements, but he doesn't have the resources to train four people, four
The first one is informational item about a collaboration that we were planning with Meade County. I was contacted by the Meade County Sheriff recently, and he's got eight full-time employees in his dispatch center, and he lost four of those at the same time. And he's got replacements, but he doesn't have the resources to train four people, four new dispatchers at the same time. So he reached out and asked if there's a way that we could help him. So I got together with my team, and the answer to that was yes. We don't have any new hires in training right now, so my training supervisor is available to help with that. I consulted with our user board chair, Sheriff Mueller. We talked about it, decided, yeah, that's something that we wanted to do. We think it's a win for them and a win for us as well. It bids team-building, and anytime that we can collaborate with another center like that, it's, we believe that it's a win. So we're planning on two weeks of training. The first week, their staff will come to our center here, and we'll do some training on basic call-taking, 911 call-taking, and entering, processing those calls. In the second week, my trainer's going to travel up to Meade County and work at their facility and train them up there on their computer-based dispatch system and also on their radio system. And in return, they're reimbursing us $2,500 for the wages for my trainer and also some travel fees to travel up there. So we think it's a good thing. We've, back in October, we hosted Lawrence County dispatchers in our center when they were moving from an old center to a new center, and that worked very well. That was, that worked out very well for us. So we think this is a good idea. I take any questions?
Any questions from the commission?
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
No questions, just, I think Kevin knows how I've, 911. I think they're a pretty awesome team. Win-win situation when any of our team is asked not only to go to this county but other counties. That tells you what kind of staff, what kind of team we have. So you're right, Kevin, it's a win-win situation for us and anybody that we can help deliver and save people and save lives with the well-trained Pennington County 911 group, I think is pretty awesome, and this is just more proof of what a great job you do and your team. So thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
I guess what I, I was going to say congratulations on the front page of the Rapid City Journal of the day, acknowledging 911 and what they do for the county because, as the Journal said, it's kind of a hidden department, you're not really recognized, but when you make that phone call and somebody answers and gets you to where you got to go, that's where you really recognize the importance of your department.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roskin. Commissioner Drews, did you have something? I don't know that I can add anything other than the fact that the collaboration agreement is awesome, and we're all a community together here, and the more of this we can do is just perfect. Thank you for your presentation, we appreciate it, and thank you guys for what you do. I think Commissioner Haddock and Commissioner Roskin summed it up for you, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Second item is requesting the authority, spending authority to purchase a smart AI program called Comms Coach. And transitioning some AI into our center is something, a goal that I've set about 18 months ago, and the technology is evolving so quickly that it's very difficult for us to stay ahead of it. But we're working with a company right now called Comms Coach that's offering a smart AI product that would help us with our quality assurance. Right now, I have one full-time and one part-time quality assurance person, and they, they have to pull the, the phone calls and listen to them and process them and score them and rate them, and then give the feedback back to employees and identify any patterns, training issues. What, what Comms Coach will allow us to do is it actually pulls all that information itself out of our radio system and our phone system, and it screens it. It's got all of our, all of our protocols will be loaded in, and it will have the ability to identify problems, patterns, phone calls where our protocols weren't followed. It will identify problems with particular dispatchers where maybe we have a training issue. It will help us identify training issues as a center when it comes to processing calls as well as individual dispatchers. So it's going to cut down the amount of time that our quality assurance team is actually physically pulling those calls and listening to them. It'll screen them for them, point them in the right direction, and they can spend more time building training programs and actually working one-on-one with our dispatchers to give them feedback, which overall is going to be a big improvement to our quality assurance. It's going to make it more efficient, we're going to provide better service. And Comms Coach is a, is a company that's trying to get established in South Dakota, so they normally charge $72,000 a year. They're offering it to us for $26,000 as the pilot agency in South Dakota. We're the first customer in South Dakota to implement this kind of technology, and they've given us their word that as long as we are customers of them, they will honor that, that annual price. So I think it's, I think that's also a win. I initially want to sign a 12-month contract to make sure that it's, you know, capable of doing what we want it to do and then suing what they're promising that it can do, and then we'll reassess after 12 months if we want to do another contract or a longer contract. So I'll take any questions that you might have about that.
Any questions from?
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Drews.
Not necessarily a question as much as, you know, artificial intelligence is evolving so fast that I think you have to, I think all of our departments need to be looking at what works for them at a given time. Because the technology is just going to constantly change. I think you're doing the, the perfect thing by taking advantage of the cost break on something like this. Hopefully, it can operate for a good period of time before you have to be looking at something else. But it's going to be ever-evolving, and it's going to just be coming quicker and quicker as we move forward. So I congratulate you, Kevin, for looking at this and bringing this as a recommendation. Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
I also believe it's, it's a good thing to move forward, but we do have a training room now. So now you're using the training room for other efficient and effective ways to move your team forward. The bottom line is, has insight to problems. There's all kinds of different areas in 911 that you have to take calls for, whether it's fire, policemen, firemen, doesn't, doesn't matter, your sheriff's office, anything that can make them more efficient and effective through those problems and how to handle those. They get some pretty excited people on those phone calls. I've seen some of them work. I've sat, I've stood in your area. That's a lot of screens. I know Deb Haddock can do one screen, let alone three at a time. So again, anything for training and insight to problems that's going to keep our people more efficient and effective is pretty awesome. Thank you for bringing this forward. Again, one thing you can say about Kevin Carley and his team, they keep their people very well-trained. They also are looking at every scenario, everything that they can do to retain their people, and the technology, it always, in the future, is going to be more and more efficient and effective. So you're doing that, and hopefully that helps with your retention as well, having that kind of training, so they kind of see right away what they're going to be handling. So thank you, Kevin.
Yes, we're welcome to that as well. And I'll add that this was approved, this purchase was approved by our user board as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and.
Commissioner Roskin.
Approve the purchase of Comms Coach Quality Assurance Software for 12 months at a cost of $26,000.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 12, Items from Grant Manager Jennifer Williams Curl. Request to apply for FY '24 Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Brick Grant.
Good morning. I am Jennifer Williams Curl, and I am the grant manager. When I started about a year ago, one of the things I did over the summer was create a grant manual. Part of that is coming to you all saying, we would like to apply for this grant and getting your blessing, and then diving into it a little bit deeper with the departments to get all of the required things. For this particular grant, we're looking at applying for one of the sub-awards from the state of South Dakota, and they have allotted $2 million specifically to a building codes plus-up pool of money. We are looking at implementing Tyler Technologies in planning, highway, equalization, and even potentially buildings and grounds to try and streamline some of our processes and our systems. Right now, we're using some different systems. There's a lot of duplication of effort of putting the information into System One and then trying to get it transferred over. As the county as a whole transitions to Tyler for the auditor's office and the treasurer's office, we're optimistic that maybe this will make things a little bit easier for a lot of those offices.
Do we have any questions from the commission? Commissioner Drews?
Thank you. So I didn't realize that we had, Del was reading this, that we had various departments that are interested in portions of this. And so, did they come to you on that, or did you go to them with the ideas?
This is something that is funded through FEMA, so Dustin and I talked about it a little bit, and then I reached out to Brittany, then Brittany reached out to some of the colleagues she works with, and it just seems like it might be a good opportunity to switch, especially because when you go to a new technology, one of the most expensive things is those implementation costs. Those only happen once you first start it, or you get a new piece. So we're hoping that we can work with Tyler, and they will be able to do us some price break because we're looking at implementing it on more of a larger scale and get those implementation costs covered through the grant and not out of the county budget.
Well, this is a great recommendation. Thank you for bringing it.
Absolutely. Thank you to Brittany for adding extra people to our meeting.
Any other questions?
Nice. Good job, Brittany.
I just had one, is Tyler, is that what the city uses too? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yep. And that's kind of where Brittany and I connected, is the city of Rapid City is planning to move their planning and equalization stuff to this software, which means that our planning and zoning and equalization won't be able to connect with their things, so a transition's going to need to happen, and we just thought that getting part of it paid for through a grant would be a great option.
Do we know does Sioux Falls anyhow use Tyler?
Yes, they do in the highway department, right?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep. And with this, the grants due February 14th, so that's why I included the local match letter that'll be required. We don't have the, the budget numbers from Tyler yet. We're still working on coordinating with them to get a little bit more information about how much it would cost. But this grant, like I said, there's the maximum of $2 million across the state, and it is a 75-25, so the county would only be responsible for 25% instead of the whole amount.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Roskin, did you have any questions?
No, I don't.
So how to entertain a motion?
Chair.
Motion?
Move to approve submission of FY '24 Brick Grant to the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management by signing the Grant Application Process Form and the Local Match Commitment Letter.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chair. One more thing.
Haddock.
The 25% are those three departments sharing that cost if this goes through? Or do we have a certain?
That is the plan, that we'll share it.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have they taken the money from you, Joe?
Items from Highway Department.
Mr. Chair. Before you go into that, just reminds me that on this, with the, with the new software that's coming in, and we've proved that at this level some time ago. But for our planning meeting tomorrow, we may want to update on that as to.
That'd be.
What departments are going to be utilizing it, when they'll be able to come on with it and so.
Perfect.
As a reminder for.
Yeah, that'd be, that wouldn't be a bad idea if we knew who, we could.
Brittany.
Brittany could.
Yes.
She's shaking her head, so there we go. You volunteered, Ms. Brittany. So items from Highway Department, Chef Joe Miller.
She's heading.
Right-of-way and utility certificates letting authorization, Deadwood Avenue Reconstruction.
Good morning, Commissioner. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. I always like to start off a little bit of history on a project like this. This project was conceptualized long before I was even in position here back in 2017 as a joint project between the city of Rapid City and Pennington County to improve the roadway and remove a dangerous curve that's just sits, is situated north of the city limit line there. 2022, we reached out to the state of South Dakota with that dangerous curve and fatality that occurred here a couple of years ago to inquire if there were safety funds available for the project. The state did concur, and we did, were able to switch this project to a safety project, lessening our costs. So we were splitting the $3.5 million 50/50 with the city, and now we're splitting 10% 50/50. So we're paying 5% of the $3.5 million, and the city's splitting the 5% of the $3.5 million that it'll cost to reconstruct this portion of roadway. The right-of-way and utility certificates are a necessary requirement when we're doing federal projects. Right-of-way certificates essentially certifying that we've received all the right-of-way or we have obtained all the right-of-way necessary to construct the project, which we have done so. That was a long process. We started that project, process back in 2019 and recently completed that in December of this last year. All utilities, the utility certification is a certification that we've notified all the utilities that this project's going to be happening, and that they need to either have an agreement or a plan to move their, their utilities prior to or during construction. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So you don't know how happy I am that this is moving forward. This will eliminate a lot of phone calls and harassment of meetings that I've gone to. It's just that it's been in the process for so long, and there's a lot of people that use Deadwood Avenue and Erickson Ranch Road that just want to see this accomplished. So I appreciate your diligence and working on this and getting this pushed through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. That's well said.
Chair.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddock.
Not really questions. I've been driving nuts on this as well, Mr. Highway Superintendent. Yeah, because a lot of my customers and stuff in the day were like, remember I was calling you and stuff on it? That curve is causing us a huge problem, can we work with the city? You took the lead on this, you went and did what you needed to do to get it done. It does take a while because it's a process of government, but Joe, thank you for doing that, and when we want something done, or we need it done right, Joe, you've done a good job at that, and this is one of those areas that it's a safety factor. So thank you for bringing that forward and getting this done with the city and cooperating with them, and bringing it down to a 5% is pretty awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Haddock.
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, good. Do we get a motion?
Mr. Steckel, Deb's comments.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the right-of-way and utility certificates and letting authorization for the Deadwood Avenue Reconstruction Project PH 175702 PCN 092U.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Move to item B, 2025 Bridge Reinspection Program Resolution 2025-01-21-1.
Yeah, so bridge inspections is something that is federally mandated on a structure that's over 20-foot in length, or is inventoried on the National Bridge Inventory Structure list. So we have an option to choose, I think there's about 20 engineering firms that are on the list there that you have in front of you. We've selected KLJ the last several years since I've been here to do our inspections. We've built a wonderful relationship with Sean Mayfield over there with KLJ. Our costs continue to be about that $20,000 a year for our entire inventory or half of that inventory, right? We split our inventory of 126 bridges in half every year, do half one year, half the next, and that's, fits the federal requirement that is, the federal requirement to inspect our bridges every two years. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, we get a motion?
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
We're on 13, right? No, 14.
B, 13B.
Okay. Move to approve the Bridge Reinspection Program Resolution 2025-01-21-1, requesting the South Dakota TUT to hire KLJ Engineering to perform Pennington County's 2025 Bridge Inspections.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Chef Miller.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll move on to item number 14. Request for approval of annexation of portion of Pennington County into the city of Rapid City. Mr. Daniel Crow, CEO Banner Communications LLC, proposed application for a taxed increment financing district annexation. I think that I talked to him earlier, I just want to make a comment that I did talk with the planning commission a little bit on this, so I believe at this point, we could have Brittany come forward, maybe? Would you come forward on this one? And maybe?
Joe. Both of them.
Okay, yeah. And then, okay.
Want to come up with Joe?
Yeah, either way. And then we could have, then after that, we'll have Mr. Crow come up and we'll just go from here.
Sure. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. I'll just give you kind of a background on it. I was approached by Mr. Crow about this annexation petition because he needs it signed, and I had indicated to him that I don't have the authority to sign that annexation petition,
sign that annexation petition, that it needed to go in front of the Board of Commissioners for signature, so I had, um, recommended that he contact the Commission Office and get on the agenda, um, for the request, uh, with all the supporting information, so that's what brings us here. Um, we did meet, um, staff did meet, um, and discuss some of the concerns that we had had, and we did send an email to Mr. Crow, um, with a list of those concerns, um, prior to this meeting, um, and also letting him know that staff was going to recommend to continue it until some of these questions could be answered.
Thank you, and, and he, we do have his questions and answers here, but, uh, I'll, I guess we could hear from Mr. Crow if he's here. Mr. Daniel Crow, you just tell us who you are and what you, who you represent, we'd appreciate that.
Uh, I'm Daniel Crow, and I'm CEO of Banner Communities, the developer of, of a series of parcels along Elkvale Road that surround the Safeway Center. And, in connection with that development program, we've applied for a tax increment financing district approval to fund the costs of extraordinary off-site improvements that must be installed in order to service the property with wet and dry utilities and some, uh, traffic management and road improvements and that sort of thing. And in that process, I might show you here on the screen. So, uh, Joan, I'm ready to get into this, but I'm not sure where to go from here. Okay. Okay. Oh, I'll try this one. Thank you. Um, before you hear, let's see, get rid of that. Well. So the, uh, the subject properties, you will see, you're probably all familiar with the general location of the Safeway Shopping Center parcel. Witness here. Sorry. Well, for heaven's sakes, Joe.
I was gonna just say, can we get Joan back out here, maybe we can drive this thing for him?
Yeah, okay. All right, uh, the three parcels that are, the subject of this matter are, are unplatted B, unplatted C, and unplatted D, and the, the highways involved are Elkvale Road to the west, Concourse Drive at the bottom here, Jubilee Lane in between the Safeway Center and the, the larger parcel, and then Jolly Lane at the extreme east and below the Twilight Drive that essentially collects traffic and, and takes it on down to Highway forty-four to the south. So, so that's the, uh, general vicinity, and now if we can go on, Joan, up to, here we go. The, uh, the tax increment finance district that we have applied for, and I'm, I'm very pleased to say that our application has been accepted, which is not normally an approval process, but in the case of a TIF district, um, they don't accept applications unless they have done a great deal of due diligence, and we've gone through the feasibility aspects of it, and, um, if, if they all line up properly, then the ex, the application is accepted, and then, then they go through a, just a perfunctory legislative process to approve it through various agencies in the city. So this, uh, this bright green line around the, the property indicates the TIF district itself, and what gave rise to the need for, for me to be here in front of you today is that the very south end of Concourse Drive, where, can you see the cursor there on the screen, it's, it's, it's an area, uh, full right-of-way only that was not a part of the city limits, it's not within the city limits, and much of our, what utility connections will go through there in order to serve the other properties, and a TIF district is not permitted to fund any improvements outside the city limits, it has to be within the tax increment financing district, so that's a parcel, uh, and I'll, I'll show you here in a moment, um, that we've applied for the county's approval to annex into the city of Rapid City. Uh, both this and the other parcel that I'll show you here in a second, uh, are already maintained by the city and have, have been for some time, so, then if we can go over to the right here, Joan, there you go. Uh, for some reason, the city limits ended up being in align with the center of Jolly Lane, n- not, not the entire right-of-way, and part of the off-site improvements that we plan to do, uh, is to, uh, put curb and gutters and any other necessary structures in that right-of-way between the east half of the right-of-way and the property line of the neighborhood along that, so, uh, now we can go down. Yeah, okay, so this, this is a map of the two parcels of land, relative, relatively de minimis in terms of size, but, but nevertheless important, um, to be annexed into the city from the county, and, and that's the approval that we're seeking, is that county acceptance of letting that part of the county go to the city for this purpose and, and for maintenance forevermore, so. Thank you, thank you. Um, I, I'm prepared to answer questions if I can.
Perfect.
So, we, we received, as, as Brittany indicated, a list of questions that Planning Department for the county, uh, wanted to have some response from us as to what the answers might be, and, and I prepared, um, a memorandum for that purpose that I think you all have in front of you, and I might, I might.
We do, Mr. Crow, and to be fair, I don't think that anybody up here's had a chance to review it.
Sure.
So.
Well, essentially, I'll just, I'll just do a, a thirty thousand feet flyover on that, um, it, it really focused on some traffic management measures that will be considered and will be accomplished a- at one point in time or another, uh, to accommodate traffic that will ultimately be generated from the TIF district, which includes not, not insignificantly the Safeway Shopping Center subdivision, which will, will, will be all commercial in time, which will generate more traffic than, than what we're doing, uh, but nonetheless, we're contributing to it as well, and we're, we're planning on, on developing these three parcels, one at a time, for multifamily, no commercial or any other use, even though we're, we're zoned as office commercial, but within that zoning, um, multifamily is permitted to a sometimes greater degree than other multifamily zoning opportunities, so w- w- we're zoned for multifamily for the three parcels that we'll develop. But I will say this, uh, when the three parcels are fully completed, there's a density available for five hundred and forty apartment units or condominiums, whichever. So there will be traffic generated from the residential side, but amazingly, uh, it, it may not, it may not compare to the commercial side, so that, that's a factor that we can't do anything about with, with our position, but, uh, everything's on the table, so we'll try to see what we can do to be helpful along the way. And I will mention that as part of our project planning, um, and, and compliance with city requirements, we're required to do a traffic impact study, which I hold up here at about six pounds. Quite a few months of, of, of research and conclusion, and you all should have a copy of that, and, and I, that's not a daunting, uh, warning, it's all summarized on two pages, actually. There's a lot of data here to look at, to understand what backs up their conclusions, but their conclusions thankfully are summarized on pages twenty-five and twenty-six, and pretty easy to understand. And the point I would make about the conclusion is that they divided their recommendations into two timeframes, one in the near instant, immediately, in a sense, when we develop, what we do, they would expect the recommendations for short-term improvements to be done then, and then over time, which anticipates the final development of the Safeway Shopping Center site, whether, whether it's by Safeway or some other enterprise, there, there is another layer of traffic management improvements that are recommended, but they're, they're anywhere from twenty to thirty years in the future, so the city is really just asking us to deal with short-term improvements to manage some traffic that we will generate as a, as a residential community.
So, we appreciate that, Mr. Crow, and I, I'm, I'm gonna go to the commission here, 'cause I know you guys.
I may have questions of our Highway Superintendent.
So, can I, you have questions of Mr. Crow, then?
I, I really don't have any questions of Mr. Crow.
But you will have questions, I'm sure, Horizon.
Yeah, I do.
I got you, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, Mr. Roskin.
So then, the purpose of the TIF is to offset some of the costs with curb gutter, water sewer.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
Well, that's the purpose of the TIF, is to help infrastructure cost.
Oh, yes.
And so, the TIF, if I understand it, you have to have a base value of those properties going, going in, do you got just a rough idea what that base value is?
Uh, I'm not, I, I have, I have our TIF application with me.
Okay.
And, and if I could dig through here for a couple of minutes, I could probably find it, but let me just say this, uh, we've done an extensive analysis, uh, in connection with the city, and as you know, a, a TIF operates on the basis where it starts out with the base value of the land, whether it's raw or whether it's
Right.
serviced or wherever the status is, that's the value, and as improvements are made to the, the land, that delta between the base value and the, uh, final value of the improvements becomes a resource of property taxes that didn't exist before the project was completed, and that delta between the base taxes and the ultimate taxes provides a cash source on an ongoing basis to service debt that, the proceeds of which may be used for improvements to help the project become a reality, and in this case, the off-site improvements are extraordinary, and I don't mean on the low side, I mean on the high side. In fact, the off-site improvements for the tax increment financing district exceed the value of, of land, at least on the residential side, so it's, it's a burden that prevents plating of the property, actually. So, the TIF is very advisable if, if the area wants to see growth in this very perfectly suited site, and, and I can't give you specifics, now, I, I could send you sheets of this that could show you how it all works, and I'm glad to do that.
Yeah, I think somewhere in there, there's a table, and it's gonna show you the base value.
Yeah.
Then it's gonna show you the increase in assessed value plus new growth.
Exactly.
You can go twenty years, but you're saying in ten or eleven years, I should have achieved that payoff.
Well, you, you raise an interesting point, the TIF, there is a question by the county on the term of the TIF, in other words, how long will that TIF be in place, taking taxes away from the city's coffers to service debt that it paid out? It's a twenty-year term.
Right.
Um, but remarkably, the improvement, the delta between the base value and the ultimate value is so significant that, uh, we're anticipating that the TIF will be paid off within ten to eleven years, almost ha- half the time, so if that helps your thoughts about, and, and, and you, you might recall, if you had any chance to look at the ta, the, the traffic impact study, much, much of the improvements for traffic management that it recommends over time are not expected to be needed for twenty years, so, so there's a, there's a timeframe between now and then that the TIF district could provide funding for those improvements. Am I making sense?
No, I understand that, as an appraiser, I was just looking at the base value, and then in year ten or year eleven, what the total valuation would be to show the increase in assessment.
Okay.
Which you can, then you can turn and equate that to taxes.
I can handle that in, in this simple way. Um, we're, we're purchasing land with a price that's, that's higher than ba, uh, base value, right, from, from when taxes were initially established, so you have a base level of taxes. So, but even, even at the price of the land that we're paying, and the difference between the ultimate cost, like for phase one, which I'm very familiar with, 'cause we're, we're trying to get it started soonest, um, the base value, ju- just at our cost, would be two million, and the, and the completed cost is thirty-six million, so, there's, there's such a significant delta between the two that there's plenty of property taxes available to retire the debt.
Mr. Crow, thank you, I think he's, he's got what he wanted, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and I think, Commissioner Hancock, you got a question?
Just, just, uh, just a comment, um, so I believe in TIF districts, um, I always have, but what I'm seeing in the city is they're annexing in properties, and then what's happening with those properties is they're impacting our county. If we look at this area, um, what you're doing with the grocery store and, and the commercial, I think's pretty awesome, I'll just tell you that, but what I tell people to look at is not just what you're impacting in the area, it's the impact where that drainage is gonna come in an area that I've already talked to the, uh, Planning Department, Brittany, who has done this for, living for many, many years on drainage as well, that it's gonna come down by the racetrack, and it's gonna come through all those properties, and the impact of the people living in that area, the impact of the county, uh, trying to figure out how we are going to sustain, uh, that area through the drainage. We have, uh, lots of TIF districts that keep coming up in our, uh, east side, um, that's the area that people have said that they are gonna move forward with in the future. The only problem is, is they're doing like the city did when I was on the city council, those oversizing, uh, costs are ending up being all the taxpayers, um, and not the ones that have actually impacted and benefited from, uh, the development they have done. So in this case, um, again, you're putting the burden, if there's not enough drainage, if there's not enough, um, area to be able to sustain that water that keeps coming from not only what you're, uh, putting on it, but, uh, I also was the diff, district or the city council person for the west side of that road, they have huge drainage areas that have been impacting, uh, this eastern part of Rapid Valley for a long time, so that's why I think at this point, um, the traffic impacts, the, uh, drainage impacts are huge for us to continue this, to make sure we have that covered, not only for your development, sir, so, again, I'm not against what you're doing, I just, uh, I'm with the Highway Department and our Planning Department, we need to be a little bit more stringent on infrastructure that we are approving on TIFs that are affecting, um, our, the areas downstream, so, just so you know that I'm not against what you're doing, just, um, when you're working with our, our, um, Highway Department and, uh, Brittany, they have lots of experience, um, and you do have a traffic impact study, I understand that, but, uh, for me, looking at the drainage, we have Rusty in here, um, from the Western Dakota Water District, if I'm correct, I said that right, Rusty? I would like to get his, uh, input on some of this too, before we move forward. We keep approving, like I said, TIFs, that people say we need affordable housing, we need all kinds of stuff, we need a grocery store, but we also need to do the impacts of what those TIFs are doing for Pennington County for infrastructure going east, so.
Let me make a quick response to your concern.
Oh, excuse me, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Hancock, and, Mr. Crow, I think that some of this may be new information to you, maybe on the drainage and stuff like that, um, we understand, it, I got a question on the TIF, is the TIF being funded by you and the bank, or is it being funded? Is the TIF being funded by you and the bank, or is it being funded by the city?
The TIF will be funded by private funds, not city funds.
Okay.
And they will be available in a normal course.
The only reason it matters is like when we get into, like you said, the cost of over, you know, overages and stuff like that, or the infrastructure that's needed in the past. When I said earlier, when I had the conversation with our planning commission, one of the things that we have to consider is the flooding that's going to take place that goes through the racetrack. We have a little bit of an issue there that we're working on. And your project, which everybody wants to do, would contribute to that drainage that goes through the racetrack, as Commissioner Hancock had suggested. And one of the other things we get into when we hand over, like to the city, when we annex, then the parts that we don't annex still become part of the county's problem, like the Jolly Lane, the rest of the way to 44, 44. So any of the impact, even if it's 10, 15, or 20 years down the road, will come upon the commission. We're going to need some time here. I think I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Hancock on this, that we're going to need some time to better swallow this and figure out a way to get you what you need to get done, so you can get it done. With that being said, you know, we could go back and forth all day, but there's a lot of questions here. I think that all the commissioners have. Commissioner Drew's had led to that earlier, that he's got a lot of questions. So for us to go forward today, we're probably going to look at a motion to continue. So I would look at the commission for a motion.
Motion to continue till February 4th, I think, is what the staff wanted.
Mr. Chair. Are we going to hear any more? Are we going to call Joe up from Highway?
I'm interested. Well, here's what I think is that we maybe should get some questions together, because I know Commissioner Drew's, I mean, we're going to be here asking questions all day long. And after sitting with the planning department, there's some things I think you guys need to get addressed on. And so then they would formulate more questions. So I would ask that they put together, I mean, Mr. Crowe had brought a question and answer from Brittany. You guys haven't had a chance to look at it.
Right.
So you get a chance to look at it, it's going to formulate even more questions for you guys, and some that Mr. Crowe might not even be aware of. So between now and then, I'm hoping that we can get these via email answered, and, you know, we can get with Mr. Crowe either via phone or whatever, and with the city to get some guarantees out of the city that they're going to play ball with us and not just, you know, like you said, why do you annex half a road, stuff like that? It's all over the community, which we're trying to resolve.
Right.
So we don't want to.
Chair, we have a motion on the floor?
Okay, we have a motion?
February 4th, continuance.
The only thing I was going to add with that.
Need a second first before discussion?
I'll second.
We got a second? Okay, Mr. Ross.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to add, would that date, February the 4th, give them enough time to get those answers? Or do we want to look at that extended out a couple of weeks? That's finally.
Staff.
For me, it'll be enough. I mean, you guys, if you, Commissioner Drew's.
I guess it's up to Highway and Dan and Brittany. Would that February the 4th be too soon, or would you?
That's what they recommended, right?
Brittany, just.
Well, here's the reason I say, I mean, time is of the essence for this, for Mr. Crowe. But we do want to do it, right?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, we won't know until we know, right? I think February 4th is another two weeks. You know, this project, you know, I don't know if it was Mr. Crowe or who it was, but it was in front of us in 2023, and then it went dormant for a long time, and then all of a sudden, we see it again here in December. So we had a lot of questions at that time that went unanswered, right? So now, if the city will play ball with us, and we can sit down and get some of these questions answered. From the traffic impact study, the recommendations, there's some stuff on there that, the short term, that we need some guarantees that that's going to get.
I would volunteer myself, Mr. Miller, to meet with you and Brittany, and then we could formulate the questions for these guys, so they can, because I understand how these projects work. When you've got a big project like this, it goes dormant, and then all of a sudden, boom. You know, when the climate changes and there's an opportunity, so.
The dormancy actually was a result of the TIF application. That took quite a bit of time just to get past that, so.
Yeah, they're in the middle of changing some rules and regulations, and you're right, it won't go forward without a TIF. There's just too much stuff that needs to be done. And I think that's where our group is protecting the citizens there, that if there's something that needing to get done, let's look at putting it in that TIF to, so.
I think the city is open to that, frankly.
They are, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to continue to February 4th?
Yeah.
Thank you.
May I make a parting comment?
Sure.
It's been several years, and Ron, you might remember better than I, but it's been several years since I've been before this commissioners' council. And in that time, I have to say that the level of assistance by the staff and the attitude of everybody has improved greatly, and I don't know who to thank for that, but it's remarkably better than it used to be.
Thank you. I think you'll find that this group here is going to be on your side, they understand it. I think Brittany and Joe, both high professionals, we're going to hold them to a big standard, so we appreciate that.
I wanted to recognize that.
Thank you. We don't get that a lot, and we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on item number?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Chairman, if I could speak on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
We'd like that continued. We have talked to a lot of the people that have applied and told them that we'd be continuing. February 4th, I think, is too soon. I think we should re-advertise it and then have it come up in the first meeting of March, if that would work.
What are you talking about?
Number 15, Utility Scale Alternative Energy Task Force.
Okay, that, if we get a motion and a second?
Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and make the motion to move to continue this item until February the 4th, 2025.
No.
March 4th.
We get a second?
March, March 4th, please. If we could, Ron, take it till March, so we can re-advertise.
I amend my motion.
Thank you, sir.
Second. Amended motion to March 4th?
Yes, second.
Great.
Second. We got a motion and a second? Any discussion on that motion?
Chair, just one discussion. Brittany, if we could re-advertise and see how many people, in case a lot of people said they haven't been seeing it, so let's try it again and see how many professionals and citizens that we can go through in order to move forward on the task force. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item 16, items from the public. Speaker request form is required at time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns of the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its functions. Action will not be taken during this section. So if you're going to come up here and have a conversation, we'll hear you and we'll hear you out, but there will be no action taken on this, because typically they aren't properly noticed. Speakers under this section will be recorded in the minutes by name and of interests. It says a recess to allow planning to set up the computer, but I have one item here from Mr. Tom Tennyson, and this is in regards, Tom, are you here? Thank you, yep. And I've had conversations with Tom earlier about his issues, so we'll hear you out, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Tom Tennyson, live off of Thoson Road and Highway 40. I, well, we acquired a property in 2020 and found out shortly thereafter that because we're not owner-occupied, we got a upcharge in our property taxes. So we finally decided in 2023 to sell all of our properties in Colorado and move back to South Dakota. And that happened in October of 2023. And in that interim time between October and the end of the year, we were moving. Moved to 20-foot vans and a 15-foot van to move up here and be here. I was looking at Pennington County's website back then, and the requirement was for me to have lived here on November 1st of 2023 in order to qualify for owner occupancy in 2024 to reduce our taxes. And I looked at their application, and essentially, I had to sign as of November 1, 2023, that I lived and occupied residence. Well, that didn't happen. So you have one day out of the year, in any year, to make sure you occupy the place. If I lived, if I moved in on November 2nd, I'm out of luck. If I moved in on October 31st, I'm in the ballgame of getting my taxes reduced. And I think there's a conflict in the statutes, because the statutes clearly say that the principal place of residence is defined as 12.1-14. And in that statute, it indicates that a person is considered to have gained residence in any county or municipality of the state in which the person actually lives, if the person has no present intention of leaving. Well, I didn't have any intention of leaving, and had I known that on November 1 of 2023, I would have answered Pennington County's application differently and attested to the fact that I occupied the house on that date and qualified for the reduction in my property taxes as of, or for 2024 payable in 2025. And I think their website needs to be updated to say, go read the statute yourself and make a determination instead of the one and only application that you get a look at. And, you know, in that application, it says, if you sign this and it's false, it's a felony, and you'll perjure yourself. And after reading the statute, I don't believe I would have perjured myself by signing it in 2023. So that's my argument, and I hope the commissioners find in my, or in my, on my side of this issue and abate my taxes, because I was led to believe I couldn't do it.
Thank you. I think what has to happen is, we're going to have to put you on the agenda, so it's noticed. And so I think we can do that today, just direct, can we just direct Holly or Joan to put him on the agenda with his concerns about the abatement? Is that, would that be the proper procedure?
Yes.
Okay. So if that works for you, if that way it's noticed and everything's good, and I've had discussions with you, I understand, and there's a lot of ambiguity with how that sits. And it doesn't sit with me very well, and the fact that a guy's here, you could have moved in, had your renters not trashed your house, you had no other place to live. It's semantics is what it comes down to when you read the Department of Revenue. Nowhere on the Department of Revenue does it say you have to live there. The state statute does say you need to live there. Our application is slightly different than everything else. So everything is, if you read it all, and even a convoluted of a person who may change houses, maybe, if you're lucky, maybe five times in her lifetime, some never change, but maybe once or twice. So I think there's some opportunity there. We'll put you on the agenda and for the next meeting, would that works for you?
February 4th.
February 4th?
Yeah.
If that works for you, we'll put you on the agenda, and then we'll give you a fair hearing, so we can actually have a conversation about it and be able to have that. I think Commissioner Ross wants to say something.
I looked at this in depth over the weekend, and I got a presentation here, and I'd be more than happy to have Holly print that out. So you all got what I?
That'd be awesome, if we could do that.
This makes it a little more.
Yep. I know we've been conversing about it back and forth, so I think it'll help.
So do we need a motion?
So I get, no, we don't need an emotion. No, because we're not going to, she's just going to do it for us.
Just to put it on the agenda for February 4th.
She'll get that done, and he'll just show up, so.
And I'll just show up.
No, thank you. Thanks for, it takes a lot of courage to come before us and stand up there and talk. We get that, so hopefully we're.
Well, thank you for your time, and, you know, after living in Colorado for 42 years.
We're glad you're here.
Well, I grew up in Sioux Falls.
We'd rather have you here.
I grew up in Sioux Falls, so it's not a far move. Thank you, guys.
Rapid City's a lot better than Sioux Falls, so. And we're going to go to item number, I just have no other request forms, so.
Take a break.
I'm sorry.
I'd make a motion that we take a 10-minute break while planning is set up.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to take a break. Here's getting doughnuts.
Motion to move to convene as the Board of Adjustment?
Second.
We got a motion and a second? And any comments on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. So items from, items from planning and zoning, and this director, Brittany, today we got Jason. So we're going to, we need a motion to move as the Board of Adjustments, right?
Yeah, we already have. Now you're just going to listen to Jason's.
Okay, we're ready, so we'll go to 17. Planning Board of Adjustment hearings, variance COVA 24-0016, Patrick and Kathy Mack to reduce the minimum required lot size from three acres to 1.52 acres in a rural residential district. Okay, so Jason?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Tennyson, Assistant Planning Director. That is agenda item 17A. Access is off Highway 40, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. It's currently zoned rural residential district, consisting of 1.52 acres is the proposed lot size. So when staff considers recommendations on variance requests, we do take a two-pronged approach, and they're on the screen. I'll just briefly look at them for you. Prong one, whether granting a variance runs counter to public interest. Staff found that it did not. Prong two, whether special conditions exist to grant a variance. Staff found that there is a special condition on the property, as it is bisected by the Custer County and Pennington County lines. Just some history on the property. There's a single-family residence, detached garage, and a stable in Custer County, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. What they're proposing to do here is to subdivide the property, essentially create two lots. You can see the area the variance request is highlighted in red. That is the 1.52 acres. Current zoning district of rural residential requires the three-acre minimum lot size. Staff did consider this request, because ultimately, the lot is going to be three acres, it is just in two separate counties. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. With that, staff, you will see this preliminary plan later on in the agenda for your action. With that, staff recommends approval of COVA 24-0016, with one condition, is there is a special condition on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
Chair.
Commissioner Hancock.
I'll move approval per staff recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
I just got a couple of comments on that.
Sure, go ahead.
Ask for a second first.
Okay, then we can get a second on the motion for discussion.
I'll second it. For discussion, yeah. I just wanted to say that Pat asked me if I'd come out with him. Kind of showed me what he had, and I didn't have a problem. What kind of makes this interesting is that his property, if I understand it, part of it's located in Custer County, part of it's located in Pennington County. So that made this one a little bit more interesting, but appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Ross, connecting, explaining that, because I wondered what he was talking about, so that makes sense, and telling us that you were there. So we got a motion and a second. We got any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Move on to item number B, letter B, 17B. Appeal a planning director's decision. Jane Tolman and Darlene Brown. Okay, so, thank you.
Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. So Jane Tolman is appealing the decision by the Pennington County Planning Director to deny accepting an application for a variance to reduce the required setback. Per Pennington County zoning ordinance, Section 207E, the required setback for properties zoned rural residential is 25 feet from all property lines. The planning director denied the application for the following reason. The applicant does not have a hardship as required by Pennington County zoning ordinance, Section 509. Per this section, the purpose of a variance is to modify the strict application of the specific requirements of the zoning ordinance in the case of exceptionally irregular, narrow, or shallow or steep lots, and other exceptional physical conditions whereby strict application would result in difficulty or unnecessary hardship, and would deprive the owner reasonable use of the land. The property consists of three acres of relatively flat land. There is buildable area where the proposed pool, which is enclosed by a gazebo, can be placed without the need for a variance. The applicant is in the audience for questions, and then staff does recommend that the Board of Adjustment deny the applicant's request for the planning director to accept the application for a setback variance.
Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll start down with Commissioner Ross.
I also went out there and looked at this. And where they built all those homes in that area, because of the topography and because of that drainage, they tend to put the homes towards, I believe that would be the west boundary of those lots. And as the applicant pointed out, there are a number of other structures located within 25 feet. I read it, I don't know, I'm just using some common sense, but I wouldn't want that pool in my front yard. And so there is, because of topography, that there is an issue trying to put that pool someplace where there is some privacy that the train seems to have some guidance in that particular area, but I don't have a problem with this particular one. That's just my two cents worth.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock?
Chair, I also don't have a problem with this. It's a gazebo. Do we have any complaints from the neighbors about this?
No, so this is just an appeal request. I do believe she went out and got some signatures that were included in the packet, but this isn't the actual application. She'll still have to go through the variance process and send out letters.
Yes, sir.
To the neighboring properties as well.
Okay. It just doesn't seem like that a gazebo would cause that much issues. Maybe I don't know about gazebos all the time, but we live in quarter acre lots with a hot tub or anything. We haven't had any complaints, so I don't see that this would be a big issue. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. I don't, I've never heard from BLM before indicating an objection to building closer than what our regulations are, so I can't imagine that they're gonna come forward and object to this. I'm fine with this one, too.
So can we get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve the applicant's request to direct the Planning Director to accept the application for a setback variance relative to the above-ground pool.
Second.
So we got a motion in a second. Any comments on the motion in a second? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries to allow a setback to happen. Okay, we go on to item C, Appeal a Planning Director's Decision, Tim and Tammy Starkey.
Megan Talmage, Planner. Agenda Item C is an appeal to the Planning Director's Decision. This is for a possible car dealership located at 6501 Anderson Road. The property is 1.02 acres. It's currently zoned suburban residential zoning district. A car dealership is a use that's better suited for a commercial zoning district, and staff, staff will not accept a conditional use permit upon that reasoning. And staff recommended that the applicant could appeal that decision to the Board. Staff still recommends denial to the appeal to the Planning Director's Decision as again, this is a use that's better suited, better suited for a commercial zoning district.
Thank you.
Chair.
Hold them in, or Commissioner Hancock?
So I just talked to Mr. Starkey, Tim, and he would like to at least try to go through the conditional use permit process, and this would allow him to at least learn the process, see what that process is, and move forward. So I'm not against him doing that if they end up denying at Planning Commission, and he understands that process at that point. I did explain that to Mr. Starkey, so this board today would be just permitting him to actually apply for a conditional use permit today.
Any other comments up here?
Mr. Chair, I looked, I looked at this one pretty close, and I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Hancock, that I, I think that would be the route to go at this point.
I think, okay. Mr. Starkey is here. Do you have any comments you want to make, or it sounds like we're, we're gonna have a sec. Maybe we should get a, a motion in a second so he can understand and speak to it.
Move to approve the applicant's request to direct the planning staff to accept an application for conditional use permit for a car dealership within a suburban residential zoning district.
Then I'll second that.
And we got a motion in a second to allow him to take this to the Planning Commission for, to see how they, whatever they, the decision they make there, what happens if they approve or deny?
So this would be run as an in-home occupation for a car, for the dealership and shop to be completely contained within a structure. If they approve it, they would get a letter from us stating that the use would be allowed within, on their current property through the conditional use permit.
And if they denied it?
If they denied it, then they would not be able to have that use. They could come back and reapply for what staff had given as an alternative for a car repair shop still contained fully within the structure.
Okay. And so that appeal, would that come back to the Commission?
No. After your decision today, it would be still, or it would continue with the Planning Commission. Whether the Planning Commission denies or approves, it would not come back to the Board of Commissioners.
So their, their decision's final either way?
Yes.
Or, and does he have a right to take it to the state to challenge it, or?
Yes, they, the appeals period still applies for them.
Mr. Chair, so Megan, if they approved the conditional use permit, there would probably be conditions that would address some of the concerns that the neighbors would have.
Exactly. Based on reviewing the conditional use permit that was referenced on Pioneer Street that they had talked about, it would follow a lot of those same conditions where it would be completely contained within the structure. The signage would need to follow our sign ordinance. Any, any materials coming from repairs or anything that they do would need to go through the proper channels as for disposal and whatnot. It would be similar to a conditional use permit for a car repair shop that's, it needs to be contained completely within the structure.
It was my understanding that there would be no more than two vehicles on the property at a time, so that would be one of the conditions, I assume?
We could look into that as conditions, yes.
Well, I think, yeah, if that's what their intent is, I think it ought to be in writing.
Okay.
Chair, one more question.
Commissioner Hancock?
So Megan, if you could look to, is how, how many home occupations are around by this property? Because I think that would make a huge difference for them to know, or the Planning Commission to know, and what kind of those conditions and some of the things that, so Tim and Tammy understand why we do the things we do and what those other businesses are doing in order to comply, because they want to do their home business or their business in that area as well. So that makes it, so they can kind of copy or understand the people that are around them and how they got theirs done. So, thank you, Megan.
So I, I got a question here. So now we need a motion to let them go to the Plan, to the Planning Commission?
We did. I thought I made the motion and.
Okay, so we got a motion on the table?
In a second.
Commissioner Drews, do you have anything to say here?
Nope.
Okay, perfect. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So they'll be allowed to take this to the Planning Commission, so. If you need direction on that, just grab somebody from the Planning Commission, or is it Megan?
That's Megan, yes.
Megan can help you with that process. So thank you, guys. Now, I guess we need a motion to adjourn as the Board of Adjustment and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners?
Remove.
We got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We are now in the Board of Commissioners, so. Number 18, Planning Consent Agenda. The Board of Commissioners using a consent agenda to act on non-controversial routine planning and zoning items. Consent agenda is acted upon by one motion in Board of the Boat. Items may be removed from the consent agenda, placed on a regular agenda at the request of a board member, a citizen. The planning and zoning consent agenda contains the following items. Conditional use permit, CUR 2216, down in Troy, Rickard, review of recreational vehicle park on the subject. So, and that is item number 18, right? Or is there, does it go down farther? Does it, all these, all those are contested, so item number 18. Brittany, could you just give me a little guidance on this consent?
Sure. So it's just item number 18A for that conditional use permit, and Planning Commission did concur with staff's recommendation and recommended approval. So that's the only consent agenda, so if you approve the consent.
So I get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the planning consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And so we move to item number 19. Planning uncontested hearings, correct? Preliminary plan, COPPL 24-0014, Patrick and Kathy Mack to subdivide and create a PCM Track West and PCM Track East of Haywood Estates. Planning Commission recommended approval of COPPL 24-001. So this is following up with the other item? Correct.
I'll move approval of COPPI 24-0014.
Any comments on this item?
Six conditions.
Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Planning contested hearings, Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment 0A 2412, Pennington County, to amend Section 204D height of the zoning ordinance. So we might need a little bit of guidance on this item, Brittany?
Sure. This item is to amend Section 204D height. It's to exempt water storage structures from the maximum height requirement. A couple meetings ago, this Board of Adjustment saw a height variance for a water tower in an agriculture district, and the Board approved it and staff recommended approval. So staff felt that since it is in line with other things that are exempted, such as church spires, chimneys, utility poles, that this would be a common thing that would be allowed. Just so you know, water storage structure is only allowed in agriculture and ranchette as a use by right, so it would only exempt those height requirements in those two districts. If they did want to have it in another district, it would have to go through a CUP process and a variance process.
Okay. Makes sense. Still get a motion?
Move to approve QOA 24-12.
Second.
We got a motion in a second to approve. Any comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. B, Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment 0A 2413, Pennington County, to amend Section 324B, accessory dwellings of the zoning ordinance. We might need a little prompting there, Brittany?
Sure. So this requested ordinance amendment is to allow efficiency dwellings as accessory dwelling units. Currently, as our ordinance stands, because of the language in this, A, the PCZO 204 requires a 20 by 20 structure. Adding this requirement would allow an efficiency dwelling as an accessory dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit is anything 700 square, 700 square feet or smaller. An efficiency dwelling is 400 square feet or smaller, so we do have requests for people that would like efficiency dwellings as accessory dwelling units. And this would also allow them to have an efficiency dwelling as an accessory dwelling without having to do two conditional use permits.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Chair. So just a question, Brittany. So they wouldn't be allowed to have a, to build a accessory dwelling without having a main dwelling in place already, correct?
Correct. But you can have an efficiency dwelling without a main dwelling if you have a CUP for it. So an efficiency dwelling could be a principal dwelling.
Okay.
And the size of, I'm sorry, the size of efficiency dwelling is 700 square feet?
400.
400 square feet, okay. Does that make sense to you, Commissioner? Okay. Any other comments? We can get a motion?
So move, move to approve, OA 24-13.
We got a motion in a second by Hancock. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move to C, Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment OA 2414, Pennington County, to amend Section 3030C, efficiency dwellings of the zoning ordinance. So this is another follow-up to that.
Yes, this is just a cleanup. It's to remove the requirement that efficiency dwelling must have the minimum dimensions of 20 by 20. In that section, it said that it had to meet the requirements of PCZO Section 204, and Section 204 does require a minimum 20 by 20. So this would accept that, saying the efficiency dwellings do not have to meet those requirements.
Perfect. Any questions on this item? We get a motion?
Motion to approve 0A 24-14.
Second.
Motion by Hancock, second by Roskinak. Any comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 21, 2025 Legislative Session, Session, Commissioner Roskinak, update on proposed bill session activity, and B, and any other legislation related to items is deemed necessary.
Mr. Chair, there hasn't.
You have the floor.
Hasn't been a lot of activity, but I'll just read some points that was provided. So South Dakota Chief Justice Stephen Jensen's effort to advance indigent legal services in the state continues to prove to be a major benefit to our counties, including Pennington County. With his support and endorsement, the legislature this year passed a bill creating the Office of Indigent Legal Services and a corresponding commission to help oversee it. The idea is to manage the indigent defense systems across the state, and Chief Justice again told the legislature last week that he wants to see those services expanded. This information of indigent legal services could lead the way to shifting the cost burden from the counties to the state. Currently, Pennington County is budgeting over $7 million for these services. So this, this had, it's a, to me, it's a major impact for Pennington County. In fact, it says, you know, 7 million, I don't know that that's gonna happen right away, but to me, that's some pretty important legislation. Also, during the last legislative session, a bill was adopted that increased the per phone cost from 125 to $2 for 911 services. However, this bill contains a sunset clause, which would end that collection in 2026. In 2025 Senate Bill 19 would eliminate that sunset clause and allow the continued collection of the $2 for line for 911 services. The increase to $2 for Pennington County saves us about $700,000 in the general funds for the current year. January the 8th, that's Fire Service Board. I did not attend it, but Mr., Commissioner Drews did, and I'll just kind of read some of the highlights, and that would be, Service Board, Dave Lindblom was re-elected Chair of this group for 2025. The mutual aid agreements are up for review, and the five-year period for resigning, those agreements by all departments will need to be accomplished in the near future. All volunteer fire chiefs will need to sign. Brad Wilson of SDML Work Group Program gave a detailed update relative to the first responder program designed to assist in counseling for the area of mental health. This program was started in 2020 and continues to show substantial use by the first responders and their families. The next meeting would be, gonna be in March, the 12th, 2025. Also reached out to Representative Goodwin, and I just asked him if he could give me some, he represents District 30, if he could just give me kind of an up-down or an upgrade of what he sees so far. I'm just gonna highlight some points that I think would be applicable to the county. The legislature is made up of two bodies. The House of Representatives has 30 members, and the Senate has 35. This year, there are 14 new senators and 28 house members, for a total of 42 newbies and 105 total legislatures. I think what this says is that the whole landscape's gonna change with that many new folks in peer this year. In the Senate, there are 32 Republicans, three Democrats. The House consists of 65 Republicans with one vacancy. Representative Herman Otten resigned, so his replacement will be chosen by the governor and, and four Democrats. Some of Chrissy Noem's highlights, South Dakota spending has nearly doubled since 2012, reaching 675 million in the 2024 budget. Governor Noem discussed again education savings accounts, with this program kept at 4 million. This is earmarked for low-income families at $3,000 per family. The money can be used for homeschooling and attendance at Perico schools. Remember, this is her proposal and needs passage from both chambers. Other items of, that she's promoting would be healthcare, agriculture, outdoor opportunities, babies, safety, our economy, our values, our freedoms, our people. Probably this next week, the US Senate will confirm Governor Noem's nomination. She will resign as our 33rd governor. Lieutenant Governor Larry Roden will automatically swear in as our 34th governor. He then will select his lieutenant governor. That person will need confirmation from both the Senate and the House. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Roskinak. That was nice. Did you, Commissioner Drews, did you want to add to that? He mentioned your name.
I would, just on the discussion that we had two weeks ago relative to the rural access funding.
Yep.
I understand that because of the concern brought by the counties, the towns and townships are not going to introduce that bill, which would take money, basically, that's already been put in the fund for county use, instead of taking from that, they're looking for other alternatives at this point in time, which, as far as I'm concerned, is good news for us.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, we'll move on to, I guess, there's no motion needed other than to recognize or acknowledge that, I guess. So we want item 22?
Committee report to, yeah, that's what Ron just did.
What did we do?
Next is either me or Gary or you on your committee reports.
Okay.
Right on the, right here.
So you got something to say? Oh, we're on twenty-two.
Let me go in.
No, we're on item twenty-two. Items from Chair, Commissioner members, right? Or is that where we were?
Ross Connect kinda did both of this.
Okay.
That's okay. That's okay.
One thing I gotta say is I appreciate you guys, um, bearing with me, and, uh, like I mentioned earlier, my communication with you guys will get better as we go. Um, I'd been gone for a week, so it kind of got me behind things, but I, I just appreciate bearing with me.
We're good.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, twenty-three meetings, committees report, Fire Service Board, Ron took care of all that, right? Uh, no meeting scheduled. Planning Commission, PC Housing?
Nope. The rest of us give our committee report.
Right. That's you right there.
Sorry.
Planning Commission, PC Housing.
I thought you were moving on to our meeting tomorrow.
Nope, nope. Moving on, this says D H, 'cause I had nothing, and Ron basically gave his, so.
Okay. So the Planning Commission, you saw, took us about a half hour, and the meeting was done. Um, so, as you see, all of our stuff pretty much got approved. Some of the stuff that was appealed, I think, was already appealed before that meeting, because I didn't hear, uh, those hearings before. So, um, Planning Commission doing good. And then you saw the different ordinances that went through on the accessory dwelling and the height because of the water tower, as we remember, and also, uh, efficiency and accessory is a huge issue with us in the county. So I'm glad that got passed and moved forward, thanks to the Planning Director and his staff. Pennington County Housing, uh, we're moving forward on some of the rad housing. We had some really good discussion on some areas that might be selling some of their stuff, uh, that, uh, that might be an exciting area for us to move forward with in the, uh, Housing Authority. We also have no change on recommendation from the Black Hills Workshop, uh, selling them some scattered housing that they wanted to buy, and wanted us to kind of put some money into it. At this point, we're selling as is. Um, and we also gave our CEO, um, Brian, a two point nine percent raise with another two percent, uh, I forgot what they call it, uh, because of his work. He goes above and beyond for our, uh, staff at Pennington County Housing, and, uh, everything we've ever asked him to do, he's got done. And, uh, he's just a wonderful, um, leader and, uh, person that, um, the team couldn't have picked a better CEO. So, um, that's about it on the Pennington County Housing redevelopment.
Thank you, Commissioner Hattcock. Um, we kind of had a presentation by the Central State Affairs, so they really filled in. Uh, compensation committee, I don't know if anybody else sat in on that, but Jerry's not here, but Gary is on here for the E S C nine one, nine one one. We had a pretty good, but whatever you want to go do there, Gary, wherever you want to fill in on.
Actually, I, I wasn't able to make the Users Board meeting, because, uh, had a conflict at another meeting.
Okay.
With the, uh, Western Interstate Region Public Lands meeting.
They gave us a pretty good.
At the same time. So if you want that report, I can give it.
No, they gave us a pretty good report today. That's the same board, then? Was the nine one one that was here earlier?
Right.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I can do the Western Interstate.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Okay. Uh, so the National Association of Counties Organization, uh, during our monthly Zoom meeting of the Western Interstate Conference states, uh, which, uh, is the sixteen most western states, "We are informed that the U S Forest Service has officially shelved the planned environmental impact requirements on old growth and forests." There are a little over thirty-six hundred counties in the U S, but over three hundred thousand comments opposed to the Biden administration plans for maintaining forests were received by the Forest Service by counties and other interested entities. Hopefully, under the new administration, we can get back to properly managing our forests. The indication was on the phone is that there has been a lot of damage done because of that, uh, proposal in many states, uh, including South Dakota, where we lost, uh, Nyman and Hill City. Uh, and to rebuild those, trying to bring those, uh, lumbering operations back, uh, didn't sound very positive for, for any place. Once, once they shut down at this point in time, it's hard to, hard to rebuild them. So, uh, that's all I have on that. Uh, the Elevate Board of Directors, uh, the evening, evening prior to that was their quarterly mixer. It was held at Home Slice Offices with about five hundred in attendance. Much of the time and explanation during the Elevate meeting on Wednesday morning was spent by Elevate CEO Tom Johnson on how well they met the goals set for twenty twenty-four, and explained the new goals of twenty twenty-five. As Elevate works to create an environment to add jobs and businesses, Tom pointed out that we have five new people moving into the Black Hills every day.
Wow, perfect. Thank you.
So Chair, can I ask Gary a question?
Yeah.
So on the conference coming on, when is the conference that's supposed to be in Rapid City?
May.
W I R.
May twentieth to twenty-third.
Okay. And then there's supposed to be, like, fundraising of seventy-five. How much are we ahead on that?
Uh, we're actually meeting on that this afternoon.
Okay. And that was the only thing that Pennington County had to, um, do, was raise the seventy-five, because I, when I read it before, I was trying to tell Ron, and I didn't, I said, just bring it up here. So, um, bottom line is, if we don't raise the money, then Pennington County ends up putting up the seventy-five, or fifty, or twenty-five, whatever's left?
The, the fundraising is between both the national, between Naco and Pennington County. Uh, we've been asked to generate some dollars locally, uh, which is what we're meeting on this afternoon. Uh, I know that Lloyd, we know that Lloyd has already started some of that fundraising. I don't think he's actually asked for commitments at this point in time, because during the phone call last week is when we really got the, the firm hold on what we need to be shooting for and, and working for. And so we will pursue that. Uh, I, I don't think that Pennington County is gonna be held liable for anything. I mean, there's, financially, I think there's a number of things that, uh, we need to provide, uh, volunteers for during the conference, you know, assistance in setting things up prior to the conference and so forth.
Okay.
But, uh, they apparently opened the motel, uh, the main one. They've got five, they got five motels, hotels reserved in Rapid City, and the day after, they apparently opened the one, uh, for the, what's now the Doubletree. Uh, that was.
Nice.
So, uh, that was filled up. So, uh, we're hoping for good success and the numbers that are going to turn out. Uh, it sounds like a lot of them are gonna be making this a family vacation, rather than just strictly for the W I R, or bringing families along for being able to tour the Black Hills, the Badlands, et cetera. So, uh, it sounds pretty exciting.
So what's the board's responsibility at this point of this conference?
The board?
Yeah, this board.
This board, yeah?
Yeah. I am, I'm now the, uh, since Lloyd's gone, I'm now the W I R, W I R representative for the state of South Dakota.
Okay.
And, uh, I will be working on, uh, the fundraising along with Holly, uh, along with Lloyd, so.
Hey, I have a question. Does, uh, does, um, visit Rapid City, are they helping you out?
Yes, they are.
Because they have a lot of, they have a lot of resources. I know Brooks is very capable.
Yes, they are.
So, perfect. Okay, perfect.
They've been involved. They've been at a couple of the conferences, putting on booths and so forth, of encouraging people to sign up and to come out.
Well, anytime they can get seventy-five people, that's significant for them, for our community. Obviously, the tourism are second biggest thing in Rapid City, so sometimes they lose sight of that. They're, they're going through their whole vacation rental thing, and I'm like, you're already saying, I mean, they're gonna need, if you're gonna bring your family, they're gonna need vacation rentals, so. But I, I just had one question that, for Mr. Ross Connect. We were talking about the Hill City and, and the sawmill and stuff, and how it affects what Gary was talking about. I'm sure that you were, your wheels were turning.
Yeah. Uh, I'm a, I've been a member of Hill City Economic Development Corporation probably for twenty years, and tomorrow, we got a, we formed a committee for strategic housing, because, uh, I think there was twenty million dollars allocated in, uh, Black Hills area, uh, Community Foundation. We're working with that, uh, just to do something in Hill City, because we, we lost Prairie Berry, we lost the sawmill. Uh, we got three commercial properties for sale in Hill City. I mean, my office was in Hill City from nineteen ninety-seven to last year, so I'm very well-connected with Hill City. But right now, what we're trying to do is, uh, take advantage of these, uh, grants for, uh, housing projects, and, uh, we've identified a piece of property that might work out, that we could, uh, help him per, uh, with the infrastructure, because that's what that grant money's for. But, uh, yeah, right now, there's a void with, uh, the loss of Prairie Berry. I can't tell you how many jobs that was, but, uh, it's pretty significant. And the sawmill was probably around fifty to sixty jobs. And Jim Nyman does, you know, ever since, we met with Jim right after it closed, and he wanted, he wanted to do something to kind of offset that. But, uh, there, I think there's a lot of interest in that, where the sawmill property is, and there's different types of zoning, and there's just a lot of, and then there, you got a contamination issue. But I, it would be nice to see that, that's a blighted property, you know. It would be.
Well, I agree with you. That's the reason I brought it up. I'm, I think that we're committed to do anything we can to help revitalize that area there, and if a blighted property is, obviously, if we can get someone up there that wants to take it over, we can definitely step in and help them.
But I'll be more than happy to, uh, give the commission a monthly update.
Perfect. That would be awesome.
On what's going on in Hill City.
Anything we can do to help would be.
And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Commissioner Drews for taking the lead on that W I R.
Yep.
That's a lot of responsibility, and Gary, I can help any way I can.
Yep. It's not like we don't have enough to do already, but it, when you're dealing with what we can do for the community. So I appreciate that. We'll move on. Uh, that's really it for, okay, I mean, go to item B, resolution appointment of County Commissioners to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board of Directors. There's a motion on here, um, that's outlined for us. If somebody wants to make that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to, uh, approve the resolution designating Commissioner Ross Connect as the Voting Director of the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board of Directors, and Commissioner Ron Wyfenby as the county's proxy.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion on that motion? No mo, no, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I, I mentioned to you guys early on, item, uh, twenty-four, that we're gonna postpone that, just, so Carol's gone, Jerry's gone, and so we'll just pass that up. We don't, so I guess we're just looking for a meeting to adjourn.
Uh, so move.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any conversation on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, guys, again, for putting up with me.
Thank you.